Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 19th School Committee. I will take a motion to open the meeting. By Allen.
Second.
Second by Scott. Allen, please.
Aye.
Aye. Now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is packed tonight. So we're going to try to move things along out of respect for everybody who's been out and about and working all day. And with that, begin.
Thank you. We had a great opening and the principals will be up in a few minutes. And then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Williams in a few seconds, once we get moving. But I do, I know we are packed up. We have a special town meeting on October 2nd, 2023. And we will be the school committee. We hope we'll be going to the special town meeting to request a feasibility study to be done for the central school building project. Regardless if this is a renovation or a new reconstruction, we do not know what we need to do with feasibility to study to to get involved, to see what's going on with Central School. We'll have a presentation that evening. We'll have a presentation next week at the selectmen's meeting. And we will have, we will do a couple other small presentations going forward. We were at, I was at Central School on the opening night. We sent, we passed out a brochure, a pamphlet. We'll be sending that, you'll see that pamphlet up on the website. But I wanted to come to you first and just to make sure that we start talking about the Central School. We've been talking about it for a couple of years. We've done a boiler project. I think that was 218, 219. And then we did the roof project. So we've put in over $3 million into that building. Received almost half of that back through the MSBA reimbursement because going into the queue. We're in the queue right now. We don't want to lose that position. And so hopefully we will get to go and have the town and the community and the new children who will benefit from the Central School building project five years from now. We hope to see their parents there or their grandparents there. And many of you may have gone through Central School or many people have have children there. It may not be the school that your child will be at in five years from now. And that's, but we hope that we, we can get some renovation done on that building. Not only for HVAC but ADA purposes. Bigger learning spaces and for safety. They do a tremendous job with what we have today. Our teachers are terrific. Our community support is great at Central School. But I believe that it is time for that building to get some help and to some support. So October 2nd is the special town meeting. We also had KBA Architects will be out Thursday at 9:00 AM. Or I'm sorry, Wednesday at 9:00 AM to look over our turf. We will be getting a 48 that we gave, we spent $48,000 to assure and get KBA Architects to come in and do a feasibility study on the turf. We'll be requesting that back from the town and the town, the town will give us that back to replenish what we paid for that at the special town meeting. The next is you'll do some action. I mean, I don't know if you want me to go through that. We have Karen Clifford from Central Office and Guidance Department Head is retiring. As of October 31st, 2023, we thank her for her service. I will invite all of them to a meeting in, her to a meeting prior to her leaving. Mrs. Susan Sullivan has put in her retirement papers. She's a grade three teacher at Mitchell School. Her retirement date is effective December 31st, 2023. Mr. Parkett has started actively looking for a grade three teacher. And so hopefully we can fill those big shoes. And we thank her for her service and I will ask her to come back and see you prior to her leaving. Mr. Doug Ortenzi is our head custodian of the district. He also is the custodian here at daytime. Does a lot for the town as well when it comes down to Christmas on the common or EBCC was in, had their community fair during the summer. Doug is always here, always here for support. We will miss him greatly. He has put in his effective date of December 31st, 2023. I'll go with the building principals. I've asked them to be very brief between three to five minutes on their openings. So we'll start with Mrs. Byrne. Then I guess it's Bill Silva will go first for our high school and then Matt Parkett and then Kate Byrne. And then Dr. Williams will take over for Active Minds and go right down through with, or I think you're going with his handbook, right?
Do we want to do, no, that's fine. We'll just do, we'll do the action item when we talk about active minds. Yeah, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, how's it doing?
Hello.
Evening.
Thanks for having me. So it's been a busy couple of weeks here at the High School. I want to thank the custodian crew, DPW, with the grounds. It was great. The building's ready to go.
We're basically fully staffed. We're looking for two more positions. We have an inclusion high school and a language-based high school specialty teacher we're looking for. If you know anyone that's looking for a job, please, please email me. We had our first open house this year. We had about 175 people show up, which was much improved from last year. Last year we only had about maybe 25. So I think it was maybe better advertised this year, which was a help. We also had a special thanks to Mr. and Ms. Walsh, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh and Ms. Anderson for helping out, helping set that up. Currently we're, our enrollment's about 889 kids as of Monday. Some new stuff you'll notice this year. We assigned parking spots to students this year. So we have 101 parking spots out there. We have about 89 that have been taken by seniors. So we have a few left, which is great. We're also doing an IT internship this year, which is where we have eight students, roughly one per period. And they're working repairing Chromebooks, fixing Chromebooks for students, fixing IT issues. And as of right now, the first week and a half, they've repaired about 150 Chromebooks. And so we've been kind of super streamlined. We're using something called eHallPass, which is a new software to allow us to track students in and out of the, in and out of classes. And so one of the things teachers can do is send a student to the library with an eHallPass to have their Chromebooks repaired. And we set a limit of like four kids. So we don't have 27 kids coming down at a time. And if it's like going to the deli where you take a number, when your number pops up, off you come down, which has been pretty cool. Fridays, we introduce something called music trivia. So something for kind of staff and students to kind of look forward to. We give away $10 gift cards, Duck and Donuts every Friday. Dr. Williams is going to talk about Active Minds, which is something that Evan Dean has brought in for us. We have early college going on. We have currently three classes. We have sociology, which is an in-person class and they meet right over here. It's about eight students. We have an internal business class, which is a remote class, but it runs from 1:00 to 1:50 with the teacher on the end, on the other end of the screen. And we have three students doing fire science, which is an asynchronous class. So they can sign, they can log in anytime they have time during the day to take that. And I think we have five people, Lilia, for the police academy.
Five.
Yeah, which hasn't quite started yet. We're just kind of waiting on time for that. But that'll be, those will be full days, I think, and those won't be part-time. Sports are up and running. We have, actually just came from the boys soccer game. They were down 1-0. Hopefully they're doing better now. But we have about 300 students that are participating in sports. We have a cheerleading trip that is going to be maybe proposed for April?
March.
March, okay. Of its nationals in Florida, which is coming up. Evaluation cycle starts soon for us. We have our drama, Mamma Mia. They've already started kind of beginning to set the stage for what that's going to look like in casting. As far as testing goes, we have Eye Ready, which started on 9:05 and it's going to run until 9:29. That's kind of done in the seventh, eighth grade classes and it seems to be going well so far. No hardware issues, which is usually the biggest hurdle. MCAS retakes, we have a few of our, our seniors and juniors that need to retake MCAS, which is going to be in November for math and February for science. So we've already set some things in motion to help those students out. We have a few kids that are going to audit a biology class again, let's say, to kind of get prepared for February. And then we have some tutoring in place for our math kids. Parent conferences are right around the corner, early October. And kind of the last thing is homecoming. It's going to be a busy week. So if you're going to be around, it's going to start the week of the 17th. We're going to have, we have a powder puff game on a Monday. Our interviews for King and Queen on Tuesday. We're going to do our, I believe, Wednesday, Thursday is the bonfire. And we're going to try something new this year, which is going to be a, like a dinner, like a pasta dinner. So it'll be open to the public, $5, all you can eat lasagna. Come on in during, before the bonfire. We're going to have local businesses donate money and make a, kind of like a placemat for, for all the local businesses. Donate 25 bucks or something like that to pay for the food. And grades nine through 12, we're working on that along with our student activities. And then we're going to have our game on Friday and dance on Saturday. Everything weather permitting, obviously. So a lot going on. Sorry to throw it out there at once, but any questions I can answer for you or any of that kind of stuff?
Thank you.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
I realized that we did not put Lilia on the agenda. Do you have anything real quick to report? Because I know Mr. Silva probably just.
Yeah, for the most part.
As you were saying, I was like, oh shoot, Lily usually says that.
I can go quick. The only thing that I have to add is that Mr. Silva helps me last week send out a survey to the school. So just about like the beginning of the year and stuff like that. So we had like, just to see numbers, like how many students participate in athletics, first band and chorus or were your teachers helpful figuring out your new schedule, things like that. So it was very cool to see like the feedback. But my favorite part of the survey was an open-ended question, like you got to tell, basically tell us like what you do outside of school. Like who you are, like what you do. And that was really cool to see, like, you know, different kinds of things. Like you could be doing woodworking outside of school or Irish dance, like it's, so it was really cool to see that. And some of the ideas that students were proposing was cool as well. So that's all I have to add because you kind of covered it all. But that's all right.
How many kids responded to that survey?
About 200.
Oh wow, that's good.
Decent amount, but hopefully.
Cool.
Awesome.
Thanks, Lilia. Thank you. Sorry.
I gotta run. I'm going to cop shit.
That's right. Thank you, Lilia. Mr. Parkett for Mitchell School?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everybody for making that last year such a welcoming, wildly successful, fun year. It was fantastic. Glad to be back. I can't top why you can eat lasagna and bonfires. But I can say that we had an excellent and having an excellent opening to the school. We've had a lot of movement and all for very good reasons with a lot of positive intent and good purposes behind them. Just to give you a sense of what I mean by that movement. To start the school, of course, we need people. And we had, we have 18 people educators in the building that are either new to the building or in a new role at the building. So all of those transitions require time and attention and care and all of them, again, for positive reasons. All wonderful hire. Our staff is phenomenal over there. We're very excited about everybody's in the new positions. And the staff that, when we came back for our faculty meeting, noticed that our staff in particular was, was spending a lot of time over the summer through the mini grant opportunities, working on their curriculum. We had 14 groups. A couple of singletons there, but mostly like two or three teachers who teamed up and mapped their curriculum or rewrote assessments in preparation for the, for the upcoming year. So that was, that was impressive to see that we had 14 there. And then we have the people. We need the, we need the things. So we did, we got some things to sort of get off the ground. Just for some numbers, you know, we put in 12 brand-new whiteboards, nine brand-new touch views. And I have to thank our PTA, top, bottom, left to right, for their really unconditional support. And a lot of things, I can list, I can list after item, after item, after item of what they contributed. But one of them, when you pull into the parking lot, there's an area where we have the students line up during recess, recess in the grass area and it'd become just mud. And the students would line up there and, you know, you'd have 150 students, you know, four times or whatever, three or four times, marching through the building on every floor with just, you know, tracking this dirt. And it seems like, oh yeah, it's mud, it's dirt. But it really, you know, it takes time to clean it up and people to clean it up and it's a mess. And our teachers were really particular about how their rooms are looking. They take a lot of great care and pride in their environments. So it was a really, it was a big deal that they, they sort of gave us a donation to have that area paved. And it just, it looks wonderful. It came out beautifully. The kids line up on it now. There's no dirt going through the building. And it was a little thing, but it was like, wow, okay, this is great. So the teachers, it was all paved by the time the teachers came back and just felt good to be able to have some highlight. So I have to say, I can't say enough about our PTA. It's just been amazing. And we would, we would continue with these changes. And again, all purposeful, all thoughtful on trying to make Mitchell better. How can we use space better? How can we do things better? And just to give you an idea, when I say there's a lot of movement, we had 25 total classroom changes over the summer and into the start of the new year. For instance, just as an example, a couple of the teacher team rooms at grade five and grade six, the design of those particular rooms are almost like suites where they have a front office and a rear office to it. Large, large rooms. And we said, well, what if we use that as possibly, you know, special education suite? Where we can put a special educator in front and one in the back. It's to invite opportunities for collaboration, to have a, you know, a place where they can, you know, meet. And so we moved, made that move in the sixth grade and the fifth grade and then with our speech program as well. Same thing in the building design, using, in other words, all the space as economically as possible. So that there's a, there's a fluidity to the, to the day as it goes through. So it was, it's nice to see that. So hats off to the custodians for putting up with my 25 classroom change requests and getting it all done and ready for the, the school to open. And on top of all this, we have a new schedule going in. Primary objectives being to really fortify some time for some professional learning communities and common planning time for teachers. But at the same time, open up really curricular opportunities, enrichment in particular, for students. Something that we could bring to them that they would need sort of in the moment or we can't, or we're not giving them in the, in the general curriculum. For instance, like a really fortified, you know, SEL curriculum. And we built that into the schedule and we had our first lessons today. Our counselors went around to, to grades three and four and, and started teaching SEL lessons. And what I really like about this, and I'm pausing to really highlight this because it was really, it's a, it marks the, it marks that we have this big idea off the ground in practicality. Our philosophy, so we have, we have the people, we have the things, we have the building, we have the schedule and we need a sort of an educational ideology. And part of that ideology includes, you know, the, the power behind positive relationships and, and respect. But this curriculum that they put together takes this idea of, of respect and treating yourself and others with respect. Take that idea and just kind of goes one step further. And yes, highlights the importance of diversity and highlights the importance of differences. But really highlights the one thing that every single human being has in common and that's dignity. You know, this, this, this worth by just, by virtue of being human. It's, it's, so they take this, this concept and, and sort of weave it through what we already had present as a pretty strong educational ideology from last year going into this. And now we have it being taught into the classroom. And the classroom teachers, the idea is to pick up on that and keep moving that forward. It's a, the go from theory to watching it manifest itself in practical, in practicality was really beautiful to see today. It was like, wow, you know, you thought of, you thought of something and there it is playing out. Just so, just a great moment. I thought that is one of the, the highlights of getting the school off the ground. And then of course, once you have the educators and you have the, the things and you have the building and you have the schedule, we need kids. The kids were so joyful and they were just the vitality of them coming into the building was palpable. Our open houses were wonderfully successful. Our student assemblies were great, reiterating a lot of the ideologies that we briefly glazed over here. Yeah, with all of this movement, all of this change, I don't think we really could have gotten off the ground any better than, than we did. A lot of credit goes to a lot of people. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Byrne, past put in that lease, Central School? Thank you, ma'am.
Hello and welcome to the new school year. It's nice to see everybody. I will try to be succinct. I know we had like a five-minute cap, but I never really have a timer going. So I'm going to do my best here. But the start of the year has gone really well. I do want to start off by saying that our new calendar this year, that front loaded those three days for staff, I've heard nothing but positive feedback. I thought they were great. I thought the opportunity for us to welcome teachers back on that Monday, both at a schoolwide and then district-wide, allowed us to have a great benefit and a nice team-building opportunity. The full day for PD on that Tuesday was excellent. It really reinvigorated all the teachers. Mr. Parkett mentioned some of the summer mini grant work. That was an opportunity for teachers to share that and talk about it that day. In addition to get some training about some new changes to our Eye Ready program going forward. And then they still had Wednesday to get all of their planning and room prep done for our open house, which was that night. And our, our open house was well-attended. It was great, very successful. The superintendent, like she said, she was there with Mr. Power, passing out brochures and talking to families about our MSBA project. I will say that over the summer, you know, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't really think about. And so the main office secretaries, our administrative assistants, my assistant principal, the custodians, everybody is constantly working all summer long so that the opening is smooth. And so I'd like to thank Mr. Shea and his support and the custodians for giving a facelift to our art room. It looks tremendous. If you haven't been down there, there's primary colors all over the wall. There's new storage solutions and systems and some new upgraded tables. And Ms. Wilson, the art teacher is thrilled. All students have noticed. Everybody loves the new space. We are very grateful for that. We also have a new ramp out front. That was one of the summer projects done. It needed some dire repair. So it's been repaired by DPW and facilities under Brian Kylie, as well as got a nice new paint job. So that's great. And compliant with a nice slope so that our friends that might have assistive technology or wheelchairs can easily get up and down. So we're grateful for that as well. I'd also be very remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Jay Phelan. All summer long, he has been my partner in crime in trying to hire. And so he's done a lot of legwork to help support us hiring instructional support assistants, not only in my building, but I think throughout the district. And it's still something that we're still working towards. We hired several new staff members, but we still have a couple of openings at Central School that we're looking to fill. But so thank you, Mr. Phelan, for all of your hard work in helping and supporting that. Deb Vaughn and Food Service, we still have our breakfast program in place. It runs a little differently. So our preschool friends actually go to the cafeteria now for both breakfast and lunch, and that is new this year. So if you can imagine three-year-olds heading down, they're doing it in style and it's taking their time, but it's working very successfully. So we're grateful for her patience as our three and four-year-olds are accessing the cafeteria now with great success. And our kindergartners can also go to the cafeteria for breakfast as opposed to having it in their classrooms, which is also a change from last year. Our bigger kids, our first grade and second grade students come in like troopers off the bus, get their breakfast if they want it and they bring it to class. And they did that last year as well, but very successful. So we're happy for that. And the support from the superintendent, Mr. Shea, to allow us to also get a little bit of time with a monitor in the morning for breakfast to help assist us with all of those moving parts because we do need that supervision as kindergarten teachers are in the class, not all students access breakfast. So we needed some support there in the kitchen. So we're grateful for that. Bussing, bussing was a really hot topic last year. And I want to say that our bussing is going very well. Our timing is working out. We do have a few new drivers on new routes. And so that takes some time to adjust. But overall, our timing with buses leaving Mitchell and arriving at Central is much improved. So we're grateful and we appreciate everybody's hard work. Lucini, Mr. Shea, everybody else involved. Thank you, Mr. Parkett and Mitchell School as well for your timely dismissals. It's very appreciated. One other thing I did for neglect to mention under summer projects was our, our garden at Central School. So our garden at Central School needed some repairs and we were in the works with Mr. Ferrioli here at the high school to do those repairs. And over the summer, we discovered that there were some underground beehives. And so ultimately, the decision was made that it was best to remove the entire garden at this time as opposed to repairing structures. So we no longer have our, our garden outside, out back at Central School. So we do have a, a nice rectangle of crushed pavement that is there in its place. And we definitely have other opportunities for us to still plant with students and talk about the life cycle of a plant. But it just looks a little bit different now. But we appreciate everybody's hard work and diligence in making that happen quickly because it was a last-minute decision that we wanted to make sure was done before teachers returned. So it was done in a matter of two days, I think. So thank you to Mr. Kylie and his crew. First grade family lunch has been happening last week and this week. So we have our four sessions of that. So that will continue, formally called the first grade parent lunch. We call it first grade family lunch. But that's going very well. And let's see. And let's see, our baseline assessments for fall, that window is open, as you heard Mr. Silva also mentioned too. So it opened on September 5th. We don't tend to start assessing that early at Central School. Our window goes till October 6th. So students are starting that process, so it might be talking about iReady assessments, DIBL's assessments, and they also go through a phonics screener, which is part of the process that we do with our reading teachers as well, just to get that early foundation, that baseline for all students. So that is underway and will continue out through, again, October 6th. Mr. Paquette was talking about social emotional learning, and I have a wonderful connection with that because at Central School too, we have lessons that are front-loaded. We want all students to have like a tier-one foundation and understanding about social emotional language that we use at Central School. And so we don't want to take for granted that they know what we're talking about when we say something's expected or unexpected, or you need to follow the group plan, and what's the group plan right now. So we front-load those lessons. So Mr. Mahoney, our school psychologist, along with Ms. Burnett, who is his intern this year, are doing expected and unexpected lessons, school-wide, in all classrooms pre-K to two. And then in addition, we have Mr. Ross, our physical education teacher, will be co-teaching with adjustment counselors, one recess expectations, but then have a nice, beautiful overview about our buddy bench on the playground, why we have it, how to use it, as well as our Doug Flutie communication board. So all of those lessons and how to use the equipment and why we have it and how you can be a buddy out on the playground are all part of the curriculum that we're choosing to teach deliberately through all students that access a physical education class. So that would be our five-day full-day pre-K and every student in grades K1 and 2. The adjustment counselors in addition will also be going into classrooms, front-load three essential lessons right out of the gate, so it'll be done by the first week in October. But to start the school year, like things that I mentioned, what the group plan is, helping students understand what that is, maybe the directions that are in the class, that's part of that process. Personal space, my space, your space, what's our personal space bubble, what's our comfort, that's a big lesson. And then our Band-Aid lesson, which is really about, you know, fair isn't always equal. And so that was how we start front-loading our social emotional learning in all classrooms. So that's underway. Teacher goal-setting meetings have also started, and we'll have those completed by October 1st, as teachers are working on their SMARTY goals, both for student learning and a professional practice goal. Couple of things that are also upcoming, our Waterwise program, this is our year three, so our second grade students going to the YMCA. We had our parents Zoom last night. We had about seven families join us, and that's just for two classrooms at a time that we do the Zoom and answer any specific questions. And that's with Lauren Buchanan and Meredith Luddy from the YMCA that partnered that Zoom. And so we're looking forward to two classrooms starting the first week in October to go to Waterwise. And we have two more things. Parent workshop series will continue this year. Those are those opportunities for families to learn a little bit more about the ongoing to Central School, whether it's instruction, curriculum, or special initiatives. Our parent workshop series for our October PTO meeting, which is gonna be October 4th at 6:30, is gonna be about our ALA safety protocol. That will be the first lesson that we teach families, talk about our safety protocol, the language that we use, and then go over our instructional scope and sequence so they get an idea of what it looks like from a pre-K to 2 building. So that will be that workshop series that night. And the other thing I had listed was just to share that we partner with Bridgewater State University. We've been a professional development school with them for about nine years now, and we do have Bridgewater State student teacher. We also have an Endicott College student teacher, and we have many Stone Hill students visiting us doing practicum hours. So we're a busy place and we, we welcome all that, that young energy into the building. Any questions about our opening?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Williams?
Great. If I can just go a little out of order, so I can bring the, the teachers up who worked on the faculty handbook. So early last year, maybe late fall, Dr. Amanda Castle, who is a fourth-grade teacher at Mitchell School, came to me with the idea of a project to relook at our faculty handbooks. We had a faculty handbook at each building, but looking at how those could be consolidated so that we had one district-wide faculty handbook and having it electronic so that it's easily updated and always current. So I said, absolutely, put your committee together. So they started in, I think about February maybe, and worked through June. I think you have a hard copy in your packet, but it is electronic right now. There's two places where staff can find it. One is on our annual mandated site, so that way we make sure that everybody has seen it, reviewed it, and signed off on it, as well as it lives in our training resources on, on our, our website. So I'd like to bring up Dr. Castle, as well as I'd like to commend the members of her committee, three of which are here tonight. We have Kaylee Smith, who represented Mitchell School, along with Cheryl Curtin. And then we had Tricia, we have Tricia Eddy from, formerly from Central School, now at Mitchell School as a reading teacher. And she was joined by Ann Gorham at Central School, representing Central School. And we have Matt Bellargian from our junior senior high school, who also worked with Laura Preval. So the whole committee worked tirelessly. They shared with me all the edits and updates they were doing. They put it through the, the principals as well, just to make sure they accounted for everything, and I couldn't have done a better job if I tried. So truly appreciate their efforts, and I'll let Amanda talk a little bit about the process.
Everyone's leaving, so I think you can join me.
Never mind it's on again.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amanda Castle. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Mitchell School. We had the opportunity to pull together staff from all three buildings to go through old handbooks and look at districts around us to see what they included in their staff handbooks. We got together with different stakeholders throughout all three buildings and talked about what we thought would be essential to have in our handbook. We have a lot of new staff, so it's really important for us to have a comprehensive document that staff can reference and a document that really represents what's going on in all three buildings so that there's similar expectations and an understanding of what is being done in all three buildings. So we're really excited to have this document. We're hoping that it will be a living document that will be revised each year as we have changes in expectations or policies. At the back of our handbook, we have school committee policies linked, so if staff members are curious about any of the policies district-wide, they do have a resource they can go to, and everything is in one place for them. So it was a great process. These members worked really hard. They worked in cohorts where they went out and they sought information from various stakeholders within their building, and then we came back together as a staff so that we could really see how we could make this vision come alive. So to have the finished product is really exciting. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Paquette?
Yes, sir.
Bus, right there. Excellent at the buses. Excellent at the buses. Kate, show us your right hand. Show us your right hand out there.
I'll jump back to active minds, just to give you a little historical perspective. We partnered with Kyle Cares out of North Attleboro, maybe a year or two prior to COVID. And as Mr. Silva mentioned earlier, one of our wellness teachers here at the junior senior high school, Evan Dean, had a relationship with the Johnson family and actually introduced me to Jim Johnson. Jim came in, brought in representatives from many of the mental health collaboratives around, Good Samaritans, they came in and did a number of trainings for us, along with Becky Fiddler was there for us that day too. So that's really what started our awareness of the importance of, of mental health and making sure that we're equally concerned about the academic abilities of our students as we are about their, their mental health needs. So from that relationship, we really have had many other opportunities presented to us. We are working with Mental Health Collaborative right now to train all of our coaches, making sure that they're aware of mental health needs and they know how to refer students, especially if things come up during sports and activities. We've just, through Kyle Cares, we are now part of the JED Foundation for us to continue doing some work with our high school. And then last year, Kyle Cares had their very first workshop training at Gillette Stadium. And so a group of students from the junior senior high school, ranging from, they would have been rising sophomores, juniors, and seniors, attended the workshop where they learned about active minds. And it was the students who were really interested in starting their own active minds chapter right here at East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. So because it is a national chapter, it does require us to pay into the chapter, and Mr. Johnson from Kyle Cares had offered to pay for us to be members of that chapter. In addition to that, you'll see in your packet is, there's a $1,300 check, 700 which went towards paying for our chapter, and then another 700 for the group to actually get started and doing some activities. Also at your seats, you'll see a couple of the, the most recent purchases. We do have two advisors. Evan Dean is one of our advisors, as well as Karen Carlisle, who is a school adjustment counselor here at the junior senior high school. And they're really in tune with the students in making sure that we have not only during the month of September, which is suicide awareness month, but throughout the year activities that the students will be involved in to make sure that we're keeping this on the forefront. So especially for the month of September, every sports team will be wearing something green during their home game. I believe it's all during next week. Every sport has at least one home game. And also at that time, during either halftime or at the beginning, the students of the active minds chapter will be making an announcement to explain to everyone the importance of mental health awareness and as the active minds group, what they plan to do over the course of the year. So all of you are receiving a bracelet, as well as a pin, to represent your support for the mental health matters in the active minds chapter. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions, but you'll hear probably throughout the year from either Lilia or Mr. Silver, some of the activities that the, the students will be involved in.
It mentions, uh, when, uh, suicide awareness week involving our varsity athletics team. Is that a team of people who focus on athletics? Is it some of the student athletes here?
Yes, so we have students that are part of the active minds group who also play sports, but every varsity sports team will be wearing, so some way, some teams might be wearing green socks, others are wearing a green band, um, band. So we do have students on active minds that are also student athletes, as well as some students that may not be playing on a sports team, but a part of active minds that will be there at the events to promote the work that they're doing. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. I was, I was just trying to remember, Kyle's care, the fellow who came in and spoke with that?
That was, that was a number of years, that was a few years ago, right? I think that was during my last term.
Yeah, so it was actually, I want to say like 2018, maybe, 19? I don't know. It was prior to COVID.
He was here last year. But we had him last year.
Yes, he was in last year for the JED Foundation.
For the JED.
He did the presentation on the board a little bit, kind of talked.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
He's like a gentle, gentle, gentle guy.
And so his foundation has funded the, like you said, the?
Our membership.
Right. Okay, and then, but annually, we'll, we'll have to pay. What is the membership? Is it?
I believe it was $700 for the, for the membership.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Sounds great.
So we have an action item to accept the donation. I will take a motion to accept the donation. Moved by Scott. Seconded by Peter. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to Kyle Cares.
Lauren, I know that we have the Chromebooks discussion.
Yes.
However, Dr. Oz is here.
Okay.
So that we could get all the teachers in and out.
Which is around, sure.
Dr. Oz, you want to present on your international travel program?
That, right there. Christine, yeah, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, I've been planning a trip to Belize, which is a country in south of America, Central America, and it's for STEM Club. So they'll be doing a lot of activities, like going to a zoo, hiking in a tropical rainforest, snorkeling, tube, cave tubing, things like that. So it'd be something fun, something different for them to learn science and also like engineering. They'll see ruins and how those ruins were built, and they'll be also learning the culture there and the history. So I think it'd be a great opportunity for the students to travel elsewhere. We've been to some field trips around here, but it'd be fun for them to go somewhere else. So it'll be during February break in 2025. It'd be a seven-night, eight-day trip. So, um, the estimate they gave me at the time was about four grand. I don't know if that's still what it is now, but I can talk to my contact first. It's through EF Tours, by the way, which is the same as what Deb Silley was using for the Italy and Spain trip. So we've used them before. Um, should, any questions?
How many students, Dr. Oz, are you gonna open it up outside the STEM Club?
Maybe, so far, I have about 25 students interested, so I would like to keep it with STEM Club. I do have like, um, like so many active members, so we have a good number of students in STEM Club, so.
You might have to more.
Yeah, yeah. We might have more, yeah. It keeps growing every year, so, yeah.
Do they suggest a certain amount of chaperones per student?
Um, it's a six-to-one ratio, so I, I do have a few people who are interested already, so.
And that will be most, it'll be staff, right? Yeah.
Staff, um, maybe a parent, yeah, so, but yeah, some staff.
Usually with approval, staff comes in.
Will there be, so if we approve this early enough, there will be opportunities for fundraising, right? Because I mean, it's a pretty steep price tag for a lot of families. I just, I would hope that there would be opportunities for fund, I mean, I know kids can go get jobs, they can go, you know, do things on their own, but I kind of, I would hope that there would be some support.
Yeah, that's why I want to get this proposed as early as I can for that reason, so students can save up money, get fundraising, they do help them set up like a GoFundMe and like the scholarship opportunities. So, yeah, that's, that's something we really want to push for too, so.
Dr. Oz, have you, I know that we haven't had, they haven't given full approval yet. Have you had any correspondence with the, the students and their parents? Or that, is that would be your next step?
Um, yeah, I, I had some parents ask me. I don't, I did mention it to the students, I actually sent a survey just to see if there was interest, so that's where I got the 25, that number. 25 students said they were interested in, and a couple of parents did reach out, one asking about funding, so I said, you know, it's still in the works. So that's why I want to, I want to get it as soon as possible so we can have those opportunities.
Yeah, we don't have an action item on this agenda tonight.
Right.
But we can put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
We won't even, you don't, I mean, you could come back for questions or something.
I think it was getting out there to give you the information.
Right, to give us the information, and then, so at the next meeting, Mike, we'll make sure we put this on the agenda for an action item.
Okay.
For approval.
All right.
Okay.
And Dr. Oz, throughout that time, now that you've come to the school committee?
Okay.
You know, I would certainly talk to the students about it, see, you know, you could even serve it, you could even send out something else to say, I went to the school committee, they have the information in front of them. You know, if you really want to go, you know, please let me know so that the next time that they invite me in October, I can bring it back and say, now I have 60 kids, 60 students excited about this, and this is some ideas that we came up in STEM Club ourselves about fundraising or doing some other opportunities.
Okay, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I did mention to them already that I was attending those meetings, so I'll give them an update.
Sure, yeah, and I mean, I don't.
I don't forecast.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, without saying what I shouldn't say, I don't, I would not foresee any issues.
Yeah.
Given prior approvals.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, yeah, so.
And education first is behind, is the company that runs this whole, they're an international organization. I know they have a big building in Boston and, I know they're around, so, okay. Great, yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Now back to me.
So we had, so Dr. Williams, I had spoken to Lauren a week ago, letting her know that we had a Chromebook issue for iReady. Dr. Williams oversees iReady, obviously, instruction and assessment. She'd be best to answer these questions. Lauren and I went back and forth on the phone just about, out and about some questions, so I wrote instruction and assessment. She'd be best to answer these questions. Lauren and I went back and forth on the phone just about, out and about some questions. So I wrote down the best to my ability, where the generalization of the questions were. And then, as Foster said, you know, then there'll be some side of discussion. So I did give the questions that I came up with with Lauren over the telephone talking about this. I think I told Mr. Furia when he came to visit me last week. I'm just getting to, getting to know his superintendent. And I know that Dr. Williams met with her team that oversees iReady. So.
Great. And I'll, yes, I'll pass that out so that you can see the answers to the questions that the school committee asked. So it's not really an iReady issue. It's a Chromebook issue. It just so happens that iReady was one of the first platforms that we were using at the beginning of the year where we realized that a number of the Chromebooks we had would not upgrade to the newest version that was needed. So it would happen with MCAS. It would happen maybe even with Lexia. Because iReady, that testing window is the first one we encounter. That's the first one we realized that a number of the Chromebooks would not continue to update for that newest version for them to run. So just to kind of briefly answer some of the questions, it did not impact our testing window, which if our testing window was impacted, then certainly the validity of the scores would be impacted because they need to test within that window. So our workaround for that, particularly at Central School and then with grades five and six, because that's where the most aged Chromebooks were, they were done in small groups. So they were borrowed from other grade levels for them to be able to do their testing. As far as Central School, we realized in talking with Mrs. Byrne, it's fine for us to have those small group Chromebooks for students because they are never working on any iReady or MyPath as a whole class. The teachers always do that as small group. So for now, the, the need is not as great for us to replenish the Chromebooks there. At fifth and sixth grade, certainly that is much more of a need because the students are accessing not necessarily iReady, but more importantly Ready Classroom, which is our math programming. And on a daily basis, they do that. So as Superintendent mentioned, I met with Mrs. McPartland, who oversees our iReady testing, as well as Mrs. Fisher, who's involved in our tech integration, and Mr. Shea and Andrew Lamachi, our tech director, to go through this. Most importantly, what was for me to hear is, is this an issue that we will be avoiding as we move forward? So a cycle has been established. That cycle began, I believe, in 2001.
Two years ago.
So we now have grade three, grade seven being updated. Also, the requirement now is that they have a 10 life expectancy. A lot of the talk they were saying today was going right over my head. But a lot of the Chromebooks we've had were, had different expirations. Some of them, most of them were seven years, where now the requirement is that Chrome has to have a 10-year expiration. As you recall, especially during COVID, everyone was looking for devices. And as Mrs. Fisher explained to me, there could have been devices that sat on shelves for two or three years. So by the time we got them, they were already working towards their expiration. With the number of devices we have in the district, knowing that we were one to one with our entire population of students, we would have had to go into every single device individually to then pull up the, the iReady to see which ones were actually updating and which ones were not updating. So I think when that initial number was given by Mr. Paquette, it was assumed that every Chromebook in fifth and sixth grade was not going to update, which luckily was not the case. I think we were more so around 180 total.
Oh, 200, 200, 220.
That needed to be replaced. And we have 150.
We have 150 in stock right now.
So that's where we're at. Like I said, I didn't want, I didn't want you to think it was an iReady issue. It would have been an issue regardless. It's just because iReady was the first platform that we noticed was going to be an issue.
So I appreciate you guys putting together this information. It's really helps to have the full context.
So the, I, thanks for this info. It was great. So the, I understand the company, in this case, iReady, who makes the software, isn't obligated to come to us and knock on our door and say, hey, we're changing our thing. But it's posted on their website. So is somebody of the particular software platforms that we do use, is somebody keeping an eye on that? Say, oh, hey, there's an update coming?
We are now.
Okay, now. Super. Thank you.
And then Mrs. Fisher had a couple of articles for you because clearly it's not just an East Bridgewater issue. It's a more widespread issue, knowing that most school districts are one to one and using Chrome.
Thank you.
Great. Can I just circle back to one? I have in your packets, the September 27th professional development. And I just want to call your attention to, and Mrs. Byrne had mentioned it in her updates. So we've been using Alice as our critical incident protocol for, it's been five years. So we are partnering up with the East Bridgewater Police Department and the East Bridgewater Fire Department to do a full refresher training for all staff. So during our professional development day, the police department will be down here. Sergeant McLaughlin and myself will do the, the face-to-face training. And then we have police officers from the department that will be doing the scenario drills with all staff. So the timing works out nicely. As they start to talk to parents, it will all be fresh in everyone's mind. As well as it is a three-pronged approach to the training, every year, everyone does the online training. But it will be great because obviously we've had new staff come into the district for them to get the scenario drills, as well as the, the face-to-face from the police department. So that will happen on September 27th.
What does the scenario training look like?
So they will actually go through the, the types of protocols in the sense of, you know, what does lockdown barricade look like? If you're evacuating, you know, based on your location within the building, where would be the best place to evacuate to and counter? So everyone will be wearing goggles. We'll have Nerf balls. Certainly in a real-life situation, we'd be training the students to look around the room, look around your surroundings to see if in the event you need to be prepared for a counter, then you would need to be aware of what's around you to do that. However, in the scenarios, we're not going to throw books and desks and chairs at the police department. So we have the Nerf balls for that. So when we start to train students, it first starts as tabletop discussions. So the principals would share with their building a scenario, you know, an intruder is coming in through, and they would name the set of doors. They would say the location. And then it's really a talk amongst the students and the teachers as to, first and foremost, it's always can we evacuate based on our physical proximity? And if evacuation, evacuation is not a safe idea, then what? Are we close enough that we can have time to do a barricaded lockdown for our classroom? Or do we need to get ready to counter, given our proximity? So it certainly gives the teachers that opportunity to experience it themselves before they start talking to students about it and having those conversations.
We're not doing one of those trainings with like smoke bombs and.
No, no, no. The biggest difference is now when we do our, our intruder training is having no surprises. So parents will know when those conversations start happening with students. They'll know if we've run a scenario or a drill with students ahead of time so that they can start having those conversations at home. And then they'll be told, you know, that day when it's happened, how it went. So then follow-up conversations can happen at home as well. It's not meant to be an I got you. It's really, we want everybody thinking with a clear head. And certainly that element of surprise is going to make them anxious and not have them thinking clearly. We need them to practice these drills with clear, thoughtful thinking so that it becomes muscle memory for them. If, you know, God forbid, wherever in that situation, they'll respond.
I just, I remember a couple of years ago, a local district did a very realistic teacher professional development training.
No, this is Nerf balls and goggles.
And if we, if we were available, could we.
Absolutely.
Observe that?
Absolutely. So in your packet is the schedule. Because it's a half-day, every school ends their professional development, starts and ends it a little bit differently. So we'll start here at the junior senior high school and the road show will go to Mitchell and then to Central. So whatever you have time available for, as well as we'll be doing a flu clinic that day too. So if you want to get your flu shot during the day, will be an opportunity for staff to get flu shots. And then this Wednesday, I'll be sending out an announcement through Parents Square that we'll have a family flu clinic that evening as well for family members that would like to come and have themselves or their children vaccinated.
Before we move on, so I don't lose track of it, we need, we have an action, we don't have an action item. It's an action item under here to approve the $30,000 for Chromebook replacement. So I'll take a motion to approve that. Moved by Ellen, second. Seconded by Becky. Is there any discussion or further questions?
Is the 30,000 coming out of revolving funds? Where does the 30,000 come from?
School choice funds.
Okay.
Evolving.
You didn't take any IT?
Any other? Any other questions? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Crossing guards.
So we need crossing guards. We need some support, especially at Mitchell School. We asked, Chief Jenkins came to us and said, we need some help out there. Of course, we want to, you know, we also, before we begin this, I just want to wish Paul Hallen and best of luck with his health and his family. We do miss him as out there as a crossing guard in his white truck and his, his gloves on and out there every morning with a sign and helping the buses get out of Central School and being out there at Mitchell School and sort of just making sure the kids are okay at driving into the high school. So we wish his family best of luck. And of course, Paul with his health. So we, we've got Central School crossing guards. We have two up on top. We've seen them. And then we, Paul or our new crossing guard who started yesterday, Monday, they're down by the gate at Central School to get the buses out so that parents don't come that far down. Also at Mitchell School, they, they're out at the, where parents turn in at the Mitchell School. They park his truck there and there's car there. And then at the high school, they park right out here in front. But we wanted to increase to $20 per hour. Very difficult. It's two hours a day for those positions. Very difficult to get people to come in for a limited amount of time and for a very, a wage. So we hope that in the future, we'll get more people that want to like to entertain this. But we're asking, just I think there's an action item on there.
Yeah, there is.
Further down. So that's really what it was. We raised it from $16 an hour to 20 to get somebody out there. And we already had two guards out there. I spoke to them this morning, actually letting them know that we'd be discussing this tonight. They were extremely pleased and said, thank you.
And this was obviously in collaboration with.
Yes, yes, with the police. Yep. I spoke to Chief Jenkins the other, I went up and saw him the other day.
I can't find the action items. Oh, it's the third one down. Hi. There it is. Actions required by the school committee to approve payment of the school crossing guard salary from the transportation fees revolving account 263307625131 for the 2023-2024 school year. Moved by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we, does anybody mind if I move public comment before the superintendent evaluation? Is there anybody here for public comment? No? All set? Okay.
I'm moving this.
Trying, trying. Superintendent's evaluation subcommittee update. Did you guys end up having your meeting?
We did have a meeting and Dorothy Presser was here. We don't have anything to bring to you at this time. We're trying to schedule another meeting to meet again, hopefully. Next week, I think. Yeah, because this week's the, today's the 19th. So yes.
Okay. All right. Did you make progress at that meeting?
Maybe a little. I don't feel like we made, we did not make a tremendous amount of progress.
So we'll hope for progress at the next meeting then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm hoping to be done at the next meeting.
Okay.
I would, I'll stay there for six hours if I have to.
I'm glad I'm not on that subject. Okay. Do we have annual review of the fiscal year 2023-25 school committee goals? I didn't get any feedback when I sent these out last week. Does anybody have any proposed changes or anything like that to the school committee goals? No. So we do not have to have a subcommittee meeting to go over these and edit them.
I just had a couple of thoughts anyway. The, I think I mentioned before, I think we should be disciplined in reviewing these or updating these ourselves. And I was looking for, I don't know if it's on the annual, we started to set up the annual agenda. So maybe we can just drop in maybe two reference points to review the goals and whatever, just to get an update. It's one thing to have them on a piece of paper, but if we don't ever reference them, then they're really not worth much.
So you're suggesting we plug like a check-in on the goals.
Yeah.
Into the annual calendar?
Yeah. Not, doesn't have to be every month, maybe a couple of times throughout the year.
Quarterly.
Just to get an update.
We'll just, okay, so we have, okay, okay. Because we're gonna, we have an action item to approve that calendar tonight.
Oh, okay.
So. So we can either table that or we can make it informal and just try to remember. But I like to have it on the annual calendar.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm sorry, I should have given you a heads up.
No, that's fine. It's a good idea.
Okay.
That's the goals. I took too many notes and I can't see anything.
And while, while we're at it to, the protocols, because I know we're going to talk about those too.
Mm-hmm.
Again, there should be a place held for them, probably first meeting of the year or something to go through the protocols on the annual.
That's what we're doing today.
Okay.
That's, it's on the agenda to go over today.
Okay. But I'm just saying, if, if we do set up this annual.
The calendar.
Calendar, it'd be good to just say either in the first meeting or the second meeting of the year, that's the protocol reference.
So why don't we table, let's table the action item for tonight for the strategic plan and business meeting calendar. Let's, let's continue to follow it until we have the updated calendar. Gordon, no good idea goes unpunished.
What do I have to do now? Do I have to dress up or something? You only do.
Do you want to take these ideas and put them into writing on the calendar?
Okay.
And then we can get it to Mike and Mike can make the edits to the calendar. We can come back next meeting and approve it then. Does that make sense to everyone?
So I just have kind of a similar question with regards to updating and reviewing. So like when you take a look, because you have strategic plan on here, action is required as well. If you take a look at our strategic plan, we have people identified that are no longer employed at the district. And whether or not that information as to who's responsible for that part of the strategic plan has made its way to the next person.
We've changed it. We've changed, we've made those. On that one, I just, we, I updated, we are updating, we just updated that. You probably got the first one before you updated that.
This has been, then this one has been updated with all the.
Okay.
Yep. That's on our Google Drive. So that's been updated.
Okay.
And particularly move people around too as well.
And then the only other thing I had, Mike, you know, I know we have a packet that's going to go over to the town hall for when the next election cycle. So if somebody pulls papers to run to the school committee, we have a document they're going to get to see it kind of outlines a whole bunch of stuff. I can't remember. I, I didn't have time to pull the file before I left. If the operating protocols are part of that?
Are you sure they were?
I think so.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think we are. And I do just want to point out that, so on the goals, it says annually we'll give it due in September. And then on the protocols, it says annually we'll give it due, I'm sorry. The goals are annually reviewed in August and the protocols are annually reviewed in September. And that's why I dropped it out. So that disclaimer is on the goals that you sign.
Okay.
And the protocols in September.
Okay.
So we can start with the calendar when the word gets seen.
Okay. So we all. Okay. So we all also, so we have a blank copy of the operating protocols here for us, theoretically all designed tonight. So now that we've decided we're not, we're not making any changes to these, we'll need these at the next meeting to sign. This is the goals.
And does that say, does it say at the top somewhere? And I think it is down here that we, we, in the...
Just one, one thing. Do we want to change this from to '24, '25, '26 instead of '23? We want to potentially redo them when they expire. We should, we should keep the opportunity in there to regenerate them if we want.
I don't see the italics.
Yeah, I don't see any of that.
That was the goals or the protocols?
Well, you have both. The goals get reviewed, I guess, in the September.
Yes, that was in...
Right here. Oh, it is updated. Okay.
Goals will be reviewed annually in August, and the protocols should say the same thing, but September.
Yep.
It says it right where we signed.
Is this going to be the final copy of the protocols? Is this the final copy of the protocols that we're supposed to sign off on? Because there was a section here on the meeting's agendas, the second, the last one says, "Turn off all personal devices." I know we wanted to amend it to silence.
Yeah.
A lot of us are parents, and I'm not going to turn off my phone. I'm just going to keep it silent in my pocket.
Right, down away. So yeah, the last version that we signed has "turn off" changed to "silent." So I, yeah, so we need to make that, let's make the amendments, and then we can have another clean copy at the next meeting so that we all sign a good copy. Yep, I'll mark, I'll mark it up on this and give it back to you, too. Yes, sorry. We keep going back and forth, and that's confusing.
She didn't want to sign something else, it was going to break immediately.
So just, I need to catch up for a minute. So Gordon is going to add goals and protocols? Or just goals to the calendar?
He just said goals.
I just said goals, but they both are on there. It shows in this one, in September, goals and slash operating protocols. Yep, so maybe that's already a moot point.
So it is all set?
Yep.
To calendar. And then Mike is going to edit protocols. Clean copies of both at our next meeting. And does anybody have any other changes or discussions to the protocols that they want to bring up? Mike?
Sorry, we still want it to be annually protocols in August and September, when they push everything for protocols. Still keep that.
Yeah, but the goals will get referenced at least one more time throughout the year.
Right, but he's talking about in the actual document.
Yes.
I think that can stay, have that stay, and then we'll make sure that it...
Oh, the strategic plan and business calendar.
That's the one. What's the word I'm looking for? I don't know. There's a word, one word that takes care of that whole thing, and I can't figure out what it is. Did you have something else?
I don't know that word.
Reconcile. That was the word I was going to say aloud. That was it. Reconcile. I got it. Okay. I was going to say it aloud. I should have said it.
Yeah, words.
I knew it was there.
Shy word.
Okay, so protocols, we're good. Updating main protocols, strategic plan. So we're going to table this action item about the calendar until Gordon finishes his project.
Entabling the operating protocols.
The action item, yes.
Yep.
School committee to approve, we did that one. Lauren, real quick, on the bottom of the very first page, it says central school building committee update. But I don't... That was wrapped into the special day meeting. Yep, yep. Homeschool education plans. Actions required to approve the homeschool education plans as reviewed and recommended by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Gina Williams. I make, I take a motion.
Motion.
Moved by Peter.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Is there any discussion or questions? Are there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Action is required to approve changes to the 2023-24 central school parent handbook. I take a motion, the parent handbook.
Second.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Ellen. All in favor?
Right. And these are, what we have in our packet is just the changes, not the entire handbook.
Yeah, they're high, they're just...
Yeah.
...and stuff like that. Yeah.
And the handbook for each of the schools is posted online. So I'd really show my age if I said, "Oh, could I have a hard copy?" But I'll look at them. Kate'll send you one.
I'll gladly give you one.
I've been trying to keep up with all the reading you usually give us, anyway. We didn't get a book or anything.
It'll be coming. Action required on the minutes from the school committee meeting of August 22nd, 2023. So moved. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Seconded by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Action is required after review to approve the 2023-2024 Gordon W. Mitchell School and East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School parent handbook, student slash parent handbook as-is. So these had no changes, and they have been previously approved.
No, but we, talking with both principals, they're, they're going to be looking into a few of their policies.
Okay.
Some that we follow. Desi has, we have spoken with Desi on a couple of the policies that we have, i.e. bullying.
Okay.
So we actually have Alicia St. Florin coming in in a week to go over a few things with us and have a Zoom meeting with us and sit down with principals and to go over their handbooks, what is the, what is the new current language.
Okay.
We have, we have language in there from 217. She's recommending, and she is our attorney on that side for student affairs and special education from Murphy, S. Tumi and Lehane, she's recommending that we biannually go over, there's three or four things in the handbooks that need to be updated biannually.
So would those, so you're doing the work now to bring them forward?
For next year, yes.
Handbooks.
Because right now, they're, and if we get them earlier, like she said, we can always come back to it during the year. But she wants to talk to the principals and know exactly what they're looking for.
Okay.
Attendance was one of them in the handbook for the high school. Bullying on both sides, three through six and seven to 12.
Okay. There's no changes this year to the student parent handbook.
No.
At Mitchell or here at high school.
And so my understanding is, because we, as the school committee, approve any changes to the handbook, it becomes by default, or I don't know if default is the right word, an extension of our policies.
Yes.
So a handbook actually represents some of our, not all of our policies, but some. Okay, great. Thank you.
Because the MAS, they will help you develop your policies and protocols for your, your operating policies, protocols for your school committee, which overlook, oversees the entire district. But each principal has the, you know, wants to do something.
We don't...
Have their own caveat in there.
If there's no changes, we don't, I don't believe we even have to vote on it.
Well, because it's the handbook?
If there's no change.
You're just saying there's no changes as-is.
Consider it an acknowledgement.
Yeah.
Because I spoke up, I don't have to do anything extra now, do I?
Not this time, no.
Okay, thanks.
Now I have to dress up, though.
I have to go through and check a few things, but...
Right.
Yeah.
There are things, there are things that...
No, we don't need to.
But there are things that you will come up with that you may say that you want to be changed. That will give him an, Bill Silva is the new principal. Came in on July 1st. Lots to do, lots to look at. He want, he wants some time to make sure what he wants to implement with his staff, his student body, and his parents to give him an opportunity. Matt Paquette had one year in there last year as the interim principal. Now it belongs to him. He would like some time also. There's some, some changes he can see immediately. However, did not want to rock the boat until he was in, like we talked about with the PTO and, and his, his staff council and his students, and the same with Mr. Silva. And I think that giving them, and affording them some opportunity and time.
Better to get it right than rushing it.
Yeah. And then come to you, and you can support them with it.
Sure. Take a motion to approve the handbooks?
As-is.
As-is, with no changes.
So moved.
Moved by Becky.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action is required after review on payroll warrants, nine PS dated 8/30/23 and 11 PS dated 9/13/23. Just a reminder that for this, Scott and Peter both have to abstain. So I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Seconded by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action is required after review on accounts payable warrants, 10 SV dated 9/6/23 and 12 SV dated 9/20/23. So moved. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Seconded by Gordon. Peter and Scott can vote on these, by the way. All in favor?
Aye.
And before we wrap up, on the $48,000 for the feasibility or whatever for the turf, is that coming out of another revolving account out of the athletics?
So over the summertime, I sent you that email. They, the town did not have the $48,000. They asked if we could take it out of revolving accounts. We took it out of the revolving accounts. We sent them the account numbers last week of what accounts that they removed the money for. The, at the town meeting, they will be asking for reimbursement to those accounts.
Oh, great.
At October 2nd.
Before we adjourn, I...
Actually, I have a question on that. When you pay, the company you're paying the $48,000, that's the same company that could do the work on the turf? This is the KBA architectural firm, and the town has used them in several other projects. I said, no, with like a plumber, he comes to you, helps with the $100. Right. Do the work, and it's...
You sent us those, the whole committee those emails, right?
Yes.
So it's in your email. There was an email from...
Brian Kylie.
Brian Kylie that kind of went through the details and said, you know, "We're familiar with this company," da-da-da-da. So it's all in there.
I believe it shows that they would oversee the project.
I just didn't know if it was like the $48,000 was like a down payment. No. Final price. No, but...
And then it comes off at the end. There you go.
Just a reminder, you know, we oversee the fields, and we keep and maintain the best of our ability along with the, along with the town. But the town, it is there. You know, so that's why we, that's why we have the liaison of Brian Kylie. Brian Kylie will come to us and say, "This is, that's how we're going to do it." And I know that it was under a time.
Yeah.
We had to get them out there. We have a time scheduled because we want to get this done in early spring. No, it didn't need it. Yeah. Most of the turf is in my sauce glaze.
It's on my kitchen floor currently, actually.
The little beads?
Mm-hmm. I call them nuggets in my house. Before I thank EB Cam, does anybody have anything else? Thanks to EB Cam for recording and live streaming our meetings. I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I won't.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Seconded by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have those things to sign, the warrants?
They went around that one.